Ready Sylvia? Call meeting to order, everybody can rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Alright, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Reavis.
I'm here, I think.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Brechner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Papera. Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Sixth present.
Alright. Bear with us, um, after last night, I think. We'll try to collect ourselves and get through, hopefully nobody's in here is mad at us. If so, Andy's taking questions after the meeting. So, alright. Approval of minutes, um, for budget first reading for September thirteenth. And regular council meeting minutes for September twenty-eighth. There's a motion on the floor to approve both?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, first reading, Madam Auditor.
Notice the taxpayers have proposed additional appropriations notice this hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet the Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue, boundaries of Indiana on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at five-thirty PM to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year twenty-twenty-one and to transact any further business which might come before the council general fund.
Hopefully.
Federal DOC salaries, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, merit pay forty-four dollars. Public Defender Supplemental Fund, twelve-hundred, legal services, twenty-eight thousand. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The appropriation adjustments is finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance upon receipt of a certified copy of the actions taken. And where applicable, the DLGF will make a written determination as to sufficiency of funds to support the appropriation. Signed Vicki Redd, Auditor at Porter County, published October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. That concludes first reading.
Thank you. Alright, Commissioner CCD. Cumulative Capital Development Fund. Transfer one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand from consultants to power, twenty thousand dollars from water and sewer, power, fifteen thousand dollars from maintenance agreements to power. Ten thousand dollars from other rentals to power. Reason, account is depleted. Hello. Good afternoon. It's wonderful to see you all again.
Likewise.
I was waiting. There's a motion of second on the floor to approve, and we've both got thrown under the bus last night, so you know.
It's okay.
So.
It happens.
Alright, there's a motion of second on the floor on this, uh, transfer. Any further discussion? All in favor of the transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you. Yeah, unless you want to stick up for the public defender. So, public defender, um, uh, Scott's sitting in for Ken. Looks like there's a general fund to transfer for.
Thank you.
Transfer fourteen, fourteen thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars from salaries to legal services. Reason, due to deputy change, the job responsibilities of the salary slot are changing. The appeal work needs to be reassigned. You got any, continue on to the additional or just transfer alone?
Well, I, I think overall, so originally, the original additional for, uh, the twenty-eight thousand to legal services, that was submitted before we had the employee change. So ultimately, the additional could be reduced to fourteen thousand. Um, and then, uh, the transfer in the general fund would be from the salary line, uh, to legal services, and then the additional legal services, uh, and from the, uh, Public Defender Supplemental Fund. And lastly, is a transfer for the two-hundred-and-thirty-dollar difference if, from training and ed to liability insurance for the increase in the malpractice insurance for twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion to accept with the fourteen thousand. All of them but with the change of the fourteen thousand, clarify.
I thought I heard a second. There's a motion of second, so the transfers fourteen, stays at fourteen thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, but the additional is fourteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
To legal services and the two-hundred-and-thirty-dollar, dollars from training and education to liability is correct.
Correct.
It's a motion for the transfers and the additional, discussion?
Quick question, what?
No, go ahead. I'm sure you're gonna have something. Go ahead.
Alright Greg, go ahead.
Why did the, uh, malpractice insurance go up?
Just a normal increase year over year.
Every year it just naturally goes up? I mean, I was just curious, I mean, I, I'm not the.
Well, no, it's, it renews in the middle of the year. So it renews around June or July for the, till the next June or July. And until that application is submitted, you don't know the cost, and it goes up a couple percentage points a year normally.
Okay.
I was just curious what, um, what, what grant fund went ran dry, or what was the issue?
There is a grant fund that is funding through the PAC Department Rule Twenty-Six Bond Hearings. Um, and that's the funding utilized to, uh, cover the, um, the different way that the bond hearings are being handled as far as the speed in which those bond hearings are held, and then, public defender is appointed just for the bond hearing, and it's ineffectual to get people out of the jail faster. And so that has been depleted, and so that's why the, if those funds were depleted, you can't obviously get additional grant funds at this point in the year. So, that will start back over at the beginning of the year, so the additional was out of the supplemental fund to make up that difference to get to the end of the year. And then when the employee change, then that's when we pull that back to lower the additional.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Can we get a roll call? Greg, you're not certain?
No, I'm just. I'm not mad about it, I, I'm just aggro, well, damn insurance companies increasing this stuff, what the heck?
Damn.
I mean, especially when.
Damn cost of living, you know?
Well, no, I, I get it, I mean, I just, yeah. There's nothing we can do about it, there's nothing we can do, we gotta have it.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brechner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright Superior Court, Judge Fish, General Fund. It's like there's. It's like there's a transfer fifteen hundred dollars from legal to hourly. The funds will be used to hire a temporary part-time intern at the rate of twelve dollars per hour, part-time, uh, thank you, part-time intern up to twelve dollars per hour, one-forty-four, sorry.
Actually hope to offer the job at fifteen dollars per hour, limited time of eighty hours total for a winter internship. Got a job listing here that I plan to, uh, post tomorrow if, uh, I'm able to secure the, uh, transfers. The idea is that I'll have an intern that can help me with improving the way people interact with the judicial system. And the first point of that is, when I am going to go to a new place I've never been before, often I will do a Google search, I'll try to find out what I can on the internet about the place I'm about to go. If you do that for Porter Superior Court One, you will find a webpage that has my name and address. It's not very helpful. So what I want to do is have an intern come in, do some research on the internet, find out what other courts are doing, other places in the state, in the world, and make some recommendations to me about what that webpage might look like. I have an idea of my own, what that might look like, but I think a young person with new ideas and concepts of what they would look for if they were doing a similar Google search would be very beneficial for me in that regard. Second thing is, I would like to get up to high schools and talk to high school kids about how the judiciary works. And I know that Indiana has some standards that they have put forward about how the judiciary should be taught in high schools, and I would like for that intern to assemble for me the points of contact that I can work with in the springtime to be able to get out and talk to high school kids about the judiciary. My wife says, well, what if they ask you about this COVID problem? And I'm just fine doing everything on the internet, if they have to do a Zoom call or whatever, we can facilitate that, so. That's Mrs. Fish's.
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer the fifteen hundred from legal to hourly, uh, with the authority to hire, uh, up to a rate of fifteen dollars, uh, per hour, is the request?
Yes, sir, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
It's a motion of second on the floor, discussion?
Just that, uh, I was noticing, he's, he's gonna have an eighty hours paid vacation before December thirty-first. And that's one person?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, this is gonna be, it looks like, a high, uh, university student, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they're in class, so it's probably, I mean, just part-time, couple ten, fifteen hours a week or something probably, is that what?
Yes, I have a sense of urgency about getting them hired. My intent is to have the interviews completed before Veterans Day. Make a selection on the Friday after Veterans Day. Get them into the office during that time between Veterans Day and, uh, Thanksgiving. Have some discussion, get them started on the research they need to do to be able to be productive at the, at the work. And get them during their holiday break to that week and a half or two weeks that they would need to make the eighty hours. So, I mean, I have a sense of urgency about it, and maybe a little aggressive. May not work at all, nobody may be interested at all, but I'd like to have the opportunity to try.
Judge, um, is this gonna be coordinated with Kurt Ellis, with the county website? Or is this gonna be a separate website? Or is it just you're gathering information, you're gonna give it to the county to put up and make pretty?
I intend to work closely with the county IT department. I'm also the county, um, IT liaison for the judges. So I intend to work with them to actually develop the webpage, once I have the recommendations from an intern.
And I'm not sure if you know, but the Health Department, I think, just hired a part-time marketing person that's doing something like that, so just throwing out ideas, maybe there's some coordination that you could have with them, and, and they might have a person already that would be good for that, maybe not, maybe it's a wrong thing. Throw out ideas, 'cause we're here.
I'm happy to, uh, walk in that room, yeah.
And if you're wa, you, you wanna practice on a classroom, uh, your stuff, you're welcome to my classroom anytime.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, stop on by, so, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Anyo, anything else? All in favor of the, well, we'll get a roll calls, we gotta, we gotta change the one-forty-four, correct, up to fifteen dollars, Madam Auditor, so we need a roll call on that, about the transfer and the one-forty-four change.
Councilmember Brechner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Well, good luck.
Great folks. Have a good rest of your evening, take care.
You too. Alright, Sheriff. So, I'll go ahead and read off what we've got, but I think maybe there's some changes, adjustments, or, um, General Fund, there's, this is from twelve-seventeen. There's three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars of salaries, forty-four dollars to merit pay. Reason to cover the additional costs from increasing the number of corporals by three. Reducing the number of first-class officers, the cost will revert to the Sheriff General Fund for twenty-twenty-two. There's a Form one-forty-four change from zero to a hundred, twenty-one fifty-four. That's corporal, that's three of them at sixty-two thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Promote to corporals from first-class officers. So, you've been in discussion with, um, Tony, right? So, maybe clarify what, what we're wanting to do here?
So what we'd like to change is that, rather than having it come out of the DOC Fed money, we'd like to keep it out of the General Fund. There's enough money there in unused salaries, we wouldn't have to get an additional. Also with merit pay, there's enough money there. So the only change would actually be on the one-forty-four, we wouldn't need any additional appropriation.
You're just gonna transfer, I mean?
No, it's, it's just unused.
Unused?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we just need a one-forty-four change?
Yeah.
And that, the one-forty-four change right here is correct then?
You gave me the correct one, I gave you the one that has, uh, how it does change the corporal number and the first-class patrolman.
And I have a copy of it, if you'd like to.
I'm confused, it says bi-weekly salary, four-sixty-seven?
Yeah, so that was just the difference.
That's it, okay. I was like, what the heck?
Yeah. And it was just for the end of the year, that's why Tony made the correction for me.
I make a motion.
I'll second that. There's a motion of second to, um, amend the one-forty-four here for the corporal, right? And the first-class patrolman? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, there's, yep. It's a motion of second, discussion?
So, Zeddy, are we also including additional, or did I miss?
No, nope. Don't need additional, they've got money in the hourly line, salary outline item to do so, out of the General Fund. Just a reduction in one, right, for the number of first-class patrolmen and an increase?
Yep.
In the number of corporals. Correct? We get a roll call?
Councilmember Graham?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brechner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, either than I thought. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Tony and Vicki. Alright. Development and stormwater management, development and development, Indiana. Alright, so it looks like three transfers here. Cumulative Bridge Fund, five hundred dollars from culverts to advertising. Reason, advertising for open position for Assistant County Engineer. GIS CAD-Tech and Plan Review Inspector. There's a Plan Commission Transfer. Transfer of a thousand dollars from training and education to advertising. Reason, advertising for open position for Assistant County Engineer. GIS CAD-Tech and Plan Reviewer Inspector Stormwater. Transfer a thousand dollars from training and education to advertising. Reason, advertising for open position for Assistant County Engineer. GIS CAD-Tech and Plan Review Inspector. You guys maybe do it all three times, did?
Make a motion on all three transfers?
Didn't want to interrupt you.
It's a motion and a second on all three transfers. Discussion.
Not just for putting ads in the paper and stuff?
Uh, not ads in the paper, but ads on like, uh, LinkedIn. To advertise, uh, we use indeed.
Yeah, who says the newspaper anymore?
Sure.
I don't, you know, you've got two of them that might, uh.
I looked right at her when I said it. So, oh, that's great, okay, thank you.
It's for the technical positions in the office.
Further discussion? All in favor of the transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a brief announcement?
You may, sir.
This, uh, today, the Indiana, uh, MS Four Partnerships Annual Meeting is being held down in Indianapolis. Uh, our stormwater program received two awards, uh, recognized as out, an outstanding MS Four program. Uh, and Amanda Vandenover, our MS Four Coordinator, uh, was recognized with an Outstanding MS Four Coordinator Award. So, the only two awarded this year for, for those categories, uh, so very happy to announce that. We won two awards, not just one, but two.
Continue.
Yeah, we'll bring them here, we'll put them on the, you know.
I'm just glad this wasn't yesterday where the budgets were open and you're showing awards off, and, yeah.
Where were you?
Keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Juvenile probation. It's like juvenile probation supplemental fund, a transfer three hundred dollars from other supplies to telephone and internet services.
So moved.
Reason, needed to pay remainder of twenty-twenty-one bill.
Make a motion.
There's a motion of second and a third, so needed to pay remainder of twenty-twenty-one bill due to purchase required of new cellphone to replace the old cellphone, okay, I just wouldn't, so I wanted to keep reading because I wasn't sure we're starting to purchase cellphones 'cause all the phone problems we have been having, and we're not gonna start paying cellphone bills or anything like that. Yeah, I'm just messing with you out there, I see you, so. Alright, there's a motion of second on the floor, discussion? All in favor of the transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Coroner. Transfer from the General Fund, four thousand dollars from medical and hospital to consultants. Also, one-hundred-and-ten, there's a four thousand, one-hundred-and-ten from travel to telephone and internet services. Appropriation needed for shortage to the end of the year. See if there's anything else? Alright.
Make a motion for the transfer?
There's a motion. There's a second on the floor, discussion?
So, this is, this four thousand isn't covered in that contract already with that fifteen thousand per month?
No, that's separate, that's what we have to pay for the hospital fees.
So we pay fifteen thousand plus another four thousand?
It, it comes out of that fund, so, well, I'm just doing the transfer so it all evens out at the end of the year.
So, so this is gonna be up to the fifteen thousand, then, I mean, I guess I'm confused, I.
When, when I ask for that additional appropriation for the, um, pathology fees, this comes out of that same fund. So in order for it to even out at the end of the year, so I don't have to ask for any more, then we are taking it from our toxicology fund to even it out.
Okay, so this isn't paying them more than fifteen thousand, this is just.
No, no, this is, no, this is the hospital fee, the morgue fee that we have to pay for each autopsy.
Now I don't know what's on the board.
Which one are we looking at here, Vicki?
That's, yeah, that's her budget.
Where's she asking for the, the money to go to, or from, excuse me, to?
Two hundred.
Oh, right there, consultants, I see it. Okay, thank you.
Consultants.
So paid out of that, is this hospital agreement with this guy that does the autopsies, right?
Mm-hmm.
This guy, okay. And then we also have to pay the hospital to use their facilities, right?
Right.
Is there anything else that comes out of that fund, or are those the two things?
Um, there's a hospital fee, and then if we do any CT scans or X-rays, which we don't do that often, that would come out of that fund too. So I'm just making sure everything evens out.
Further discussion? All in favor of the transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
IT.
Not this guy.
IT. Another bite at the apple.
Say, nice to see you again.
You should've been here yesterday. You should've joined us last night.
All this has been fun.
We had you at the end, too, you're lucky you didn't join us last night.
Alright. IT General Fund, Form one-forty-four in front of you for your consideration, seventy-one thousand seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. Down to forty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars is the Level One Technician. Also, down from seven-hun, seventy-one thousand seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars, a Level Two Technician. And that comes with title changes for those two. Deputy Director to Assistant Director and Cyber Security Engineer. Reason, reorganizing IT Department for twenty-twenty-one. Changing job title to Senior Systems Administration to Level Two Technician, IT Network Manager to Level One Technician, and Deputy Director to Assistant Director Cyber Security Engineer with updated Assistant Director Cyber, Cyber Security Engineer Job Description. There's a motion of second on the floor, and I believe we did this yesterday for twenty-twenty-two, correct?
And other changes.
So. Further discussion? Roll call on the Form one-forty-four changes, salary and title.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick. Councilmember Brechner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
I'm gonna miss this.
Dramatic event.
Wait, where are you going?
What do you mean you're gonna miss it?
What do you mean you're gonna miss this? How's the phone system, are we back, are we on a new phone system?
No, 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 we're still at the mercy of getting new hardware in.
We're not in yet.
We're not there yet.
Wimping along?
We're limping.
Lee, I, I'd like to congratulate you on the work that you've done with restructuring your department. And as you went, as you got into that position and role, you saw some inequities, things that weren't quite right. You knew what needed to be done within your department, um, which meant, uh, I mean, in this particular case, what we're proving are two significant reductions, uh, in, in pay for those positions. And I think to take that analytical approach to who should be paid what versus five or six people getting the same amount for whatever reason, uh, I think takes, uh, takes time and energy and some courage. And, uh, and then going through the process of trying to explain it to the council, which is not always easy. But I think, uh, once you had your chance to talk to everybody, uh, everybody certainly understood and appreciated what you did. So I just wanna say, we appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Lee.
Surveyor, Surveyor Perpetuation Fund. We got a perpetuation fund for Sylvia. Transfer eighteen thousand dollars from hourly to other equipment. Upgrading and replacing GNSS receiver and Geo, huh? A tentana?
I don't know what that is.
It's a motion of second on the floor. Upgrading and, yeah, what is it? What's the GNS?
It's the base station for GPS. I also allow stormwater to jump on it, so the licenses are typically fifteen hundred dollars. And this is, this will be the third one that I've had. Usually I get better trade-ins and get some kind of deal out of it, but I'm at the point this is ten years old, and I've got to upgrade. Like all electronics, the firmware wears out, the operating systems.
Batteries don't last as long.
The batteries don't last.
Further discussion? All in favor of the transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Facilities. Lit Fund, Local Income Tax, transfer thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand and five dollars and seventy-nine cents from other equipment to building and maintenance. Also five thousand dollars from training and education to building and maintenance. Reason, to cover operational costs of grounds and maintenance for the remainder of twenty-twenty-one.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor, discussion? I see you again.
I see you.
Not sure, it's probably likewise, but. All in favor of the transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Health Department, alright.
Alright, we'll take a five-minute break.
Health Department. Transfer forty thousand dollars from hourly to motor vehicle. Reason, to replace a van that is fifteen years old. Health Department received an award of five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars from insurance reimbursement for COVID vaccines.
Make a motion to accept, proceed.
There's a motion of second on the floor, discussion?
Uh, you mentioned that, uh, you found a vehicle, and it's all-wheel drive?
Connie checked on, uh, Ford. Chris and I checked on some of the other, to be fair, and we're trying to get the best price. So right now we have a couple quotes that we're looking at to make sure, but we wanna make sure that we check with whomever makes approval, but that's what we're doing.
Alright. Further, questions, comments? All in favor of the transfer signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, or ladies, sorry.
Too easy. That was too easy.
Yeah.
Why don't you guys come up? Just slowly.
Auditor. Vicki Urbanic, ineligible Homestead Fund, a transfer. Three thousand three hundred dollars from contractual services to dues and subscription. Reason, for Porter County to join the National Association of Counties, NACO, for twenty-twenty-two. Welcome, Madam Auditor. This includes a one-year membership dues with twenty-twenty-one membership provided at no charge.
Right.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion?
And you may recall you approved it in the budget for next year, but after I submitted the budget, I found out about this offer that if we sign up now for twenty-twenty-two, we get the rest of twenty-twenty-one at no charge, and there is a definite benefit in my opinion, because thanks to NACO, we have now learned of a bill that has passed the US Senate that is now on its way to the US House, which, which would change the requirements for how we spend the ARPA monies, and it would give a great deal of more flexibility. So, the urging, the NACO is urging, uh, I guess its members to contact members of the House and, uh, urge passage of what's being called the Flexibility Act. I intend to send a letter.
So you want Andy to send a letter to Nancy?
I'll just talk to her.
That would be fine.
So you're gonna be our point of contact for this NACO, so.
It's what I'm anticipating.
That's what we've decided, of course.
It's great. Just like I've mentioned before, I think this council would be better served to, you know, engage in the, you know, the Indiana Association of Counties next year. I know it's kind of, seems like it's always been discouraged, but I, you know, watching Vicki and her participation and the knowledge she brings back from, you know, the state associations that, you know, deal closely with our legislators, what's going on, and they lobby them. They're heavily involved, and Vicki's been heavily involved in the Indiana Association of Counties, and the, I think the counties, uh, you have an auditor association too, right? You were just former president, past president now?
I'm now past president.
Past president of, and she's been representing us well, along with her, her staff, so.
We're still in the Indiana Counties Association, too, right?
Yeah.
I'm on the board.
So. All right, there's a transfer in front of you. It was our motion, a second. I guess I just needed to call. All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Vicki.
I intend to sign this up tomorrow.
Perfect. Second reading.
Thereby.
Yeah, you should have it memorized by now.
Yes, whereas it has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing and the filing additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of funds named for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. Public Defender Supplemental Fund, twelve hundred, fourteen thousand dollars, and that concludes, um, second reading.
There you have it. Second reading. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion. Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Yeah, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
All right, next is Attorney's Report. Harold texted me, said he got stuck in a mediation. So, of course, I, there wasn't anything really, um, you know, necessary, I thought, that we needed him for, but, so then getting into, um, any other, that may, any other matter that may come properly before the council. I know, um, let me find it here. Get myself in order. Wasn't bad, forty minutes, huh?
No, we're not done yet.
Huh?
Let's count your chickens before the hatch.
All right. You're only one. So, um, we received a letter, um, uh, the twenty-second, last Friday, I believe it was, you guys, um, ladies and gentlemen, from, uh, um, Mr. Paparod, Bob Paparod, he is our appointment to the Plan Commission, and, um, he submitted a letter of resignation to the Plan Commission. So, um, you guys want me to read the letter? I think you guys all seen it. Scott, do we need a formal action to accept the letter? I mean, is that normal practice? I mean.
It's not normal, that's why we resign, but it's sort of, you know, it's just unique circumstances, so I would say accept it.
Okay. So you guys have all received a letter of Bob's resignation. You know, it's, I regret to inform you that I will be resigning from the Plan Commission Board due to unforeseen circum- circumstances. I am unable to continue to carry out the responsibilities of my role as a member of the Porter County Plan Commission, and I felt it is in the best interest that I vacate the position. My last day will be October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. So I'll, uh, entertain a motion to accept Bob's resignation. Motion, a second, on the floor, to accept Bob's resignation, and I think we all are aware of those unforeseen circumstances. And this guy, I'll just say, when I first came along, this guy was here, and he is just a true champion of, you know, local government, and, you know, he continues to fight, you know, for himself on a daily basis, and, and is making it up here and doing what he can with us to continue to fight, you know, and serve. He was here last night, and, you know, it takes a lot out of him, so, you know, Bob just knows that this board would be better served by somebody that can be there, so. It's a motion, a second, on the floor, to accept his resignation. I wish we weren't, but all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. So with that, we need to make a, um, an appointment to that board. Um, and I know, I'd just like to say, I know prior to that Greg was on that board, the, the Plan Commission, so he's familiar with it. So, that's just me saying that, so.
I make a motion to appoint, uh, Greg Sims, Councilman Sims.
It's a motion, a second, on the floor, to appoint Councilmember Greg Sims to the Plan Commission. Discussion? Sylvia's laughing, like.
Take it back, take it back.
I started signing somewhere, I shouldn't have. So.
He took your line.
Yeah. Any other nominations or recommendations? All right, could we get a roll call on appointing Greg Sims to the Plan Commission?
Say yes. I'm just another. I'm sorry. I lost my sheet here. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims.
Yes. Serve us well, Greg.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be remiss in not, uh, uh, pointing out, uh, Bob's contribution specifically, not only on the council, and we're thankful that he's still working with the council, but specifically on the Planning Commission, because he had done that for many years and provided incredible insight and knowledge and leadership on the plan, uh, on the Planning Commission. And, uh, you know, I, I think we should, uh, all have, you know, an extreme amount of gratitude for the contribution he's made in that specific role, in addition to all the other stuff that he's done, but, you know, we appreciate it.
And I'm sure, Greg, you talked, I mean, I continue to talk to him, not on a daily basis, but a number of times a week. He, he continues to be there, his insight, his knowledge, you know, he's been there a long time, so, you know, I'm sure. You, hopefully you talk to him, hopefully you got questions, you reach out to him, you know, he's, he's available, he's always been available to all of us. So, um, all right. Any other matter that may probably come before the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, spend a bit of time discussing, uh, what the Commissioners, uh, passed, uh, in their Commissioners Meeting today. And all of you, I think, have a copy of, uh, what was passed regarding the American Rescue Act, uh, funds and the, uh, proposed ARPA plan, at least the first, the first phase of that plan. As, uh, as all of you know, uh, the county's been allocated thirty-three million, oh nine, six oh six six, and, uh, and we've already received our first half, our first allotment of that, uh, of that money. And the Commissioners have, uh, come up, uh, with a plan in terms of how to, uh, how to, how to spend or how to allocate, uh, sixteen and a half million dollars of it, roughly. Um, so as you look through the plan, and today we're not appropriating money, uh, we're simply looking at what they have, uh, what they have presented to date. Um, and to cover a few of the highlights in terms of what makes up that fifteen point six million dollars, as you can see, on the, uh, on Exhibit A, talks about, uh, specifically a behavioral health, uh, study, uh, to, uh, an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in there also, and that's, uh, specifically geared toward suicide, uh, prevention and the issues that we're dealing with, uh, throughout the county, which we've spent time talking about. Other COVID, uh, uh, COVID response-type items that, uh, are in the plan, uh, expanding or extending the jury assembly room over at the courthouse, uh, and making the big, the room bigger and larger for larger jury pools, uh, together. Uh, includes information technology for the jail, sheriff, and the courts, and also some, uh, architectural fees are included there for space planning to mitigate or prevent COVID and allow more space, more free space throughout, uh, uh, throughout the county buildings. Um, so those, those first components are, uh, what would be viewed as, uh, efforts in, in response to COVID nineteen. And the, uh, uh, the second component of, of their plan as presented is to, uh, respond to, uh, the negative, negative impacts of COVID and, and the, the damage that's been done, uh, throughout, throughout the county. And as part of their recommendation, what their, uh, what their plan is, is to offer up an amount of five hundred thousand dollars to township governments, and that would be divided up among the township governments based on population. And of course, as all of you know, uh, the township governments are tasked with, uh, poor relief, uh, food, uh, food banks and such, uh, and also, uh, taking care of folks who are struggling with making rent payments and, uh, utility payments and those, those sorts of things. So, uh, that would be money given up to all the different townships throughout the county based on population, and then, uh, they would be charged to distribute that money appropriately, uh, all in line with what the COVID, uh, uh, what the ARPA money can be spent on. So that's part of it. Uh, also, uh, as, uh, as you all know, uh, the county is working heavily on redevelopment, especially as it affects, uh, affects the South Haven area and Route Six corridor. And through the Redevelopment Commission, they are putting great effort, uh, and time into, uh, creating a plan to help revitalize, redevelop that area. And as all of, all of you know, too, that in terms of areas throughout the county that are most impoverished and struggle with, uh, with incomes, and the people who arguably who have been hit the hardest, uh, as a result of COVID, they felt the negative impacts and the amount, uh, the money. The money dedicated to the Redevelopment Commission, uh, will help, uh, infuse that program with the necessary cash to, uh, uh, to do what we need to do ultimately up there. Um, impacted, uh, industries and so forth, whether it be tourism or outdoor activities. Uh, we've also been talking about for quite some time the extension of the Marquette Trail, uh, and, uh, for an outdoor pathway area and trying to connect the missing links, uh, up, uh, up in North County. Also in there, uh, there's a significant, uh, significant amount of money, uh, that is planned to be attributed to the Memorial Opera House. And, uh, as all of you have also heard, that has been a focus of, uh, an area that's in desperate need of renovation and, and, and also expansion. And so, uh, they have dedicated the amount of five point five million dollars to the restoration of the Memorial Opera House to help restore that building. That also, keep in mind, would include a connector piece, which would connect the Opera House and also the museum, and also would be, uh, money allocated toward, uh, toward, toward the museum as it stands today, which, uh, at the museum, there's a residence, which used to be the sheriff, back in the day, used to be the sheriff's residence, behind that was the jail. So the sheriff, the old sheriff's residence is in desperate need of, uh, renovation as well. And so part of that, uh, five point five million dollar allocation would be to really take care of that entire campus, uh, that entire campus area. And although, you know, that, uh, sounds like a significant amount of money, as you start, uh, tearing into, uh, historical buildings, which, uh, the Opera House itself, uh, was built, if I'm getting this right, and, uh, Scott may be able to tell me, eighteen ninety-three. Uh, so I, I, I get a gold, gold star for that. Um, and it's a thirty-nine thousand gem of a facility in terms of what it has done over all these years. And we also feel, uh, that going forward, that that's something that, uh, that the county should be and can continue to be very, very proud of. Uh, and then the, uh, the jail, the sheriff's residence, uh, which is in front of the old jail, uh, is actually older. Uh, so I've learned that that's, uh, and if Kevin Paser was here, he could tell us the date probably, but I can tell you that it was in eighteen seventy-one that structure was built. Um, so as you talk about, uh, as you talk about restoring buildings like that and to do it carefully and to preserve those historical assets that we have in the county, uh, I think we can all agree that those are of monumental, monumental importance. So, uh, that's, uh, that's part of the plan that was discussed today at the, uh, Commissioners Meeting. Also, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of their plan to help with some of the, uh, capital needs at the Indiana Dunes Welcome Center. There's, they have, uh, desperate needs that have a need attention, including a roof and some other structural, uh, items that need to be, uh, that need to be addressed. Uh, and then also, uh, one thing as we, uh, uh, talk about the plan, there is one point two million dollars, which would be included, uh, as part of premium pay, uh, for, uh, for COVID, uh, employees that were involved with, uh, most directly involved with the COVID situation and so forth. So there's a four thousand dollar premium pay that, uh, that we talked about as part of our wage discussion last night. Um, the, uh, infrastructure, which is another key component of where these funds can and, and arguably should be spent, there's four million dollars, uh, that is being allocated toward critical stormwater infrastructure projects, uh, specifically including the Stimson Drain, uh, and also, uh, other drainage system problems that we have throughout the county, which we have plenty, we're making some progress, but there's still much, much work to do. So those are the components of, uh, of, uh, of their plan at this point. Keep in mind, this is half of the ultimate plan, uh, and we will, going forward, have, uh, more things to discuss and more things to, uh, you know, to decide. I thi- I think it's important to note that, uh, these items, in, in my estimation, fall, uh, very much in line with what the focus, uh, not only as it relates to, to COVID and so forth, but also the focus of what, uh, the county has been working on over the last several, several years. Uh, and that's been the focus on infrastructure, it's been a focus on roads, it's been a focus on the assets that the county has, and that goes back to our original bonding project, which included the Porter County, uh, Courthouse renovation, Porter County Expo Center, uh, renovation, uh, the one fifty-seven Franklin Administration Building, the North County Administration Building, including additional courtroom. Uh, and I think, uh, without a doubt, I, I think we can be proud of the work that's been done, uh, with the, the infrastructure and the assets that are owned, uh, by the county. And I think when you talk about the responsibility of county government, uh, I think, uh, in, in my view, I always look at it as first things first, and those things that, uh, are, uh, you know, at the heart of, the heart of what we do, and the things that we're dutifully responsible for, those are the things that we should be addressing. And I think, I see a lot of those same components in this, uh, in the ARPA, uh, ARPA plan that, uh, the Commissioners have put together. So, um, those are my, my, my comments on it. We're not, uh, we're not here to, uh, vote on the plan or the appropriation of money at this point. It's simply to, uh, acknowledge, uh, what the Commissioners have presented as a plan and, uh, determine if we can get a general consensus that we like the direction that the plan is headed. And then beyond that, there's plenty, plenty of work to do and plenty of confirmation to do in terms of whether or not, uh, or how these things will specifically fit into the, uh, money that's been distributed, uh, by the, uh, through the ARPA plan. So.
So, with that said, it was a lot. Um, so thank you, Mike.
Very welcome.
Alloquityingly done.
I thought it was very well done, yeah.
So, that's why he sits right here, right next to me. Thank you very much. Commissioner Blaney, um, Attorney McClure, you guys wanna come up for a second? Probably should have brought you up to begin with, so you got a, with a close-up of Mike and his performance. So. Mike, come on, you should know my humor by now. It's just gonna happen, all right?
Got it.
So, uh, um. So, no, I mean, if there's any questions, you guys, I really, I, I agree with Mike. I mean, this money was deposited, I don't know, three months ago.
Oh, you can look at the ledger right there.
She's.
See, nothing's been appropriated.
No, well, we've not appropriated anything, so, um, uh.
But the money's there in that box.
So, yeah, so, um, it, it's been here, there, there's been so, you know, some discussions here and there, uh, you know, and it was... These discussions have been ongoing. It's like Mike said, the discussions of maybe fitting some of this stuff might have been recent, but none of these projects are recent. These are all projects that we've been working on, all kind of the direction this county's been going. You know, just in the Redevelopment Commission, you know, we talked about some things, you know, that, I don't know, three to five years, you know, in the running, it takes stormwater, you know, just the things we're doing. In government, it takes time. So, but these are things, I, I see it as falling within the things that have, we have been working on. There's nothing that sticks out that's crazy, so, and this is only half, and, and I, and I think maybe what Mike's direction is, you know, again, for us to officially fund it, we, we would have to, um, advertise for it, you know, and, and do an additional, I don't know, is that the proper, do an additional to whatever specific projects, but they've laid out their first and approved today their fir- the, the first part of this plan that includes roughly half the money. So, you know, I don't know, it, it, discussion, yeah.
I could, can, can you, the behavioral health for the, what exactly are you trying to, what, what, what information are you hoping to get out of that? Where's the information gonna come from?
We're, uh, planning on, uh, we're working right now on a scope, on a study that would, uh, concentrate on, um, the suicide issue as far as, um, in a nutshell, where we are at, uh, compared to other like-kind areas, uh, what we do as compared to those other like-kind areas, um, maybe what some best practices are, uh, whether we are doing those and what it would, if we are not, uh, what it would take to facilitate those so that we would have something actionable, uh, to work with, um, after that study was completed, and that's why it's, it's scoped in that manner.
But who's, I guess, who, who does the study? I mean, is there groups out there? I mean, how do they?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I thought you were involved in that.
No, I, that's why I'm at, I mean, we've got the task force.
Right?
And, huh?
It was Redstone's request with your group or whatever or something?
No, I, no.
Has he mentioned you in the meeting?
Yeah, I, I know, but. I, I, I'm not associated with him.
We agree that it needs to be studied, and we need to make sure we're doing everything we can, uh, but we're not that far yet. We're.
Okay.
We need to put out RFPs and.
Okay, 'cause what I've been finding is, I mean, we're, there's, there's eleven counties in the state that are moving for this lost. counties in the state that are moving for this lost team that, that's, um, local outreach for suicide survivors. So when, when somebody commits suicide, they, um, the family doesn't know what to do, they're, it, it comes out of nowhere. So this team goes in to basically present information about, here's some information about some funeral services, here's cleanup services, here's all this stuff. And then when we were at this, it was a Ball State two-day thing we were at, we found out that other counties are doing various things about suicide prevention and awareness. And we started implementing them and we seem to be ahead of everybody else, like with our creativity and everything else. And then last night, I just found out that Melanie is working on stuff too, over in the, in that department, and I didn't even know, you know, we didn't know about each other doing stuff.
Well, hopefully that's one of the things the study will get to the bottom of, so we're not.
Bring us all together and then we can share the information and then find out what else. That, I guess that's what I'm.
We're not doing all, two people aren't doing the same thing.
Exactly. And, you know, kind of like one protocol, one, you know, and that's all just, because it's awesome and it's tremendously helpful, but I just didn't, I, you know, not that, it would just be nice to be included or informed, but by no me, you know, are we the lead on that, so I just.
We're not beyond the point that we can include you, so. We welcome your input.
But just to let you know too, we're at, what, nineteen, and we're still, last year we're at thirty, so we're, we're, we're below where we were last year, which hopefully that will continue. But, uh.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Any other comments, discussion?
I guess the only thing I would add is that, you know, there's seventeen million or so left, and obviously that's not an exact number, but, you know, any ideas, please share, uh, email, reach out, um, the doors aren't closed, the email does, you know, it works, uh, phone calls work. If anybody's got an idea, a plan, a suggestion, something that needs to be kind of ferreted through, um.
Yes, we'd love to hear it.
This is, you know, this has been the creation of this, uh, it has been collaborative, it's, it's been, most of the things are, almost all the things, I think the only thing that we hadn't talked about previous was probably the, um, the aid to the Port, you know, to, to the township trustees. And so, uh, everything else had been kind of in the mix and been talked about and, 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 and dealing with as, as, as we've been going through this for quite a long time now. And so anything that's out there that you guys are, uh, have as an idea or a possibility, please share and, um, you know, we're going to continue on in the collaborative way we've been working to try to get this completed.
I really think the money to the trustees is a, a great move, a great gesture by this county, you know, um.
You know, we may want to add to that in the next round. I did talk to, um, trustee Harper about, and he said, this is a great amount right now because any more than that, we don't have the staff to do what we need to do to get it to who it needs to go to.
Makes sense.
So, um, he said, you know, one or two pieces in this amount is great.
Maybe we can consider it. And we've got, Vicki, what is the timeline? The, the horizon on this thing is twenty twenty-four?
You have to commit it by the end of twenty twenty-four and then you actually have to spend it all, complete your projects by twenty twenty-six. So just twenty twenty-six.
So, well, that's, that's good to hear that.
Yeah, he was very appreciative.
At least you're considering that maybe there is a second round of some size, but, and I'm glad the, the trustees, I just think it would work to really get to the people because that's their role, you know, township government is supposed to be the government that's closest to the people in terms of those that are in need of what Mike said, you know, whether it could be food or sometimes clothing or some shelter or help with their bills, that, they're right there and they work with the other entities like the food pantries and, and, and stuffs that, I think this will go a long way with getting, taking some of this and getting it right down into the communities, for sure. So.
So I, I, I guess, uh, in that spirit, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we agree in principle, uh, to the plan that's been, uh, the proposed investment of American Rescue Act funds, uh, that's been prepared, uh, by the Commissioners' Office as a, like I said, uh, that we're, uh, we, uh, agree in principle to what they're doing and have a, a general consensus that, uh, uh, we support the plan.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to.
Second.
Agree in principle, second. And, you know, our, our, we'll have to, probably most likely next year, because there's the premium pay in here, we'll have to, again, take action to fund these things, you know, probably maybe some of them individually, some of them collectively, if there's things going down that, so. All right, there's a motion of second on the floor, you know, um, to, uh, agree in principle, to give that nod to the commissioners, that we like your general direction you're heading. So any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying. Well, it's, I mean, this is a discussion between us, yeah, so, I mean, if we want to open up to the floor, so. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, appreciate that and appreciate you guys staying here.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Yeah, no, no, you're, you're fine. So, um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night, Commissioner.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
No, I kind of, my, what I wanted to talk, I kind of focused on what they were talking about.
Do you want to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please? Yeah, we'll need your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Linda Rollins. I live at six forty-two Old Forge Road, Val Berizzo. Um, I'm here because, obviously, I'm, I don't think anybody will argue we're in the middle of an addiction crisis. Um, I just spoke to Representative Biggs a few weeks ago and he said, oh, I'm not interested in that, you need to call Chuck Mosley. Okay, this is something that should be, everybody should be concerned with. People are committing suicide now due to chronic intractable pain. Their pain is not being treated. Our doctors are being raided and arrested for over prescribing. We are, our hospitals are running short of pain medicine and now the DEA wants to decrease the manufacturing even lower. And I don't think people realize, chronic intractable pain, in March, it was the year my best friend committed suicide. This is something I'm going to be traveling around and I want everybody to get involved and come to the table because we're not helping pain patients or addicts. We're helping nobody. The overdose rate continues to ri- rise at increasing rates that we've never seen before. We're not coming up with solutions, we're creating problems. There's a prohibition on drugs now. So addicts are turned to the street, pain patients are turned to the street. And I think if every one of you looked through your family, you probably know somebody who suffers from chronic intractable pain and they're being denied pain medicine and they are committing suicide. Our veterans are committing suicide at enormous rates. We should all be ashamed of that, every bit of it. But we have to come to the table and I can't hear anymore. We're a small entity. It takes each one of us to keep going higher and higher and get somebody to listen and get the DEA out of the doctor's office. That's the only way to say it. Or people are going to continue to suffer, they're going to continue to overdose, and they're going to continue to commit suicide. And I need, I need help. I need more people to come to the table and figure out how, what we're going to do to fix this.
Linda, uh, if I can ask, are you a, a part of any particular group, organization, or?
I'm, I suffer from chronic intractable pain, I have CRPS. I'm an advocate for veterans, good doctors, and pain patients. Um, I have a group on Facebook, it's called, called the Chronic Pain Patient Outreach. This is a very, very serious situation and I've heard people say, oh, come on Linda, people don't commit suicide due to pain, they absolutely do. People are reaching their threshold. Even our COVID patients in the hospital, they need, if they're on vents, they need opioid pain medicine. They're running shortages on morphine and pain medicine, this should not be happening. It should not be. So, I mean, I will, I think we all, we need to create that table, we all need to come to the table, we need to make this conversation. I just talked to Rep., uh, Senator Ford, I think we can do this, but it takes all of us.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Anybody else? This is something we normally do, but you waited, um, we usually don't open it up, but I guess since we did, anybody else? Except anybody back in the back left, they're not welcome to say anything, so. You say enough, you get your own stages. This is our stage.
He wants a winning job. You got a, you got an opening in the play?
Yeah.
Come here.
You don't, you don't want me, um, yeah.
Is this your audition? Is that what?
How'd I do? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And any other matter that, and I would say, before we go, Greg Sims up here, the coroner was here last year, she threw out some stats, statistics, and, and Greg has kind of taken the lead on, on diving into suicide, suicide awareness, and, you know, you heard his questions, you know, with the study that the commissioners have put into the plan, and, and the commissioners are recognizing that, you know, so they are going to look at it. But Greg, from this perspective, has, has gone out there and created awareness, you know, he's doing what he can to bring the people, you know, the right people in together. So, you know, I've, I've continued, I've said it a number of times, I, I, you know, I commend what you're doing, taking that as a, you know, an initiative, so, bringing awareness, so, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. So, all right, nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Gotcha.